All right. I'd like to welcome everybody here this afternoon to our work session on this, the third day of March at 4:00 PM here at the community campus. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order now that we have a quorum present. We have myself, Chairman Benyon, Trustee Corcor, as well as Trustee Freund here with us. I'd like to excuse Trustee Clayton. He is out of town and Trustee Bustos should be joining us shortly. Go ahead and recognize Dr. Holmes here with us representing the Blaine County School District. We also have our board clerk, Ms. Amanda LaChance. Our district attorney, Mr. Adam King is here with us. Mr. Howard Royal, Director of Building and Grounds. Mr. John Blackman, Assistant Superintendent, and Mr. Mike Chatterton, Business Manager, here with us as well this afternoon. I would like to go ahead and welcome everybody and announce that for anybody who needs Spanish interpretation, we have Ms. Olga Masa Santos here to help us. Por favor, si alguien necesita interpretación a español, por favor ve a Olga Masa Santos para su ayuda. All right. I'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda and ask if there's any additions, corrections, modifications, or substitutions to the current agenda. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. As everyone here knows, or I would assume everyone here knows, the Seringa Mountain School has requested through the Innovative School Act to partner and become part of Blaine County School District. I have asked our administration to go ahead and request some information so they can do a due diligence report for us as a board to figure out the implications of said agreement between the two schools at this time. I'd like to go ahead and turn the time over to Dr. Holmes for that report.
Okay. If you would pull the slides up, please, Amanda. All right. So, if the Blaine County School District is to accept Seringa Mountain as an innovation school by the statute, one of the things that must be listed in the agreement is that they are now a part of the Blaine County School District and not a separate agency. And so, in doing that, we were looking at all the implications for the Blaine County School District academically, operationally, and financially, because the school district would be assuming responsibility for the school in that way. So if you go to the first slide, this is focused on some of the things that the school district would need to be cognizant of. First of all, what I just said, that they are, they become a part of us and so now we are responsible for them financially, or academically, financially, operationally. And they are to receive funding that is consistent with how funds are distributed to the other schools. So when you look at the due diligence report, you will see that we use the very same formulas we use for other schools with the understanding that, for example, when we figured out how much do we spend in the other schools for instructional software type of thing, they might have different preferences, but trying to make it equal for what we were spending on kids in other elementary schools, what would we need to spend there as well. And also, the House Bill 570 also says that we must provide them transportation, building and grounds maintenance. The agreement should include performance goals and metrics. The school must administer the ISAT, just like all of other schools in Idaho do. They must meet the Idaho content standards, so their instruction, regardless of the method that they use, must meet those standards. Academic outcomes are then accredited to the district. That goes back to the conversation we were having earlier, that we are now responsible for them academically, operationally, and financially. The school must abide by any laws prohibiting discrimination, so we have to be careful to make sure there's nothing that would cause any kind of discrimination charges. They must meet the laws governing safety and their employees are then eligible to participate in all the same benefits that our current employees participate in. So with that, we'll, rather than go through all of the information that was presented in the report, we'll just go briefly through some of it. So the first one we have there is just their ISAT scores. That was last year's scores, not this spring, which all of the schools are just now completing, I believe. And so those are their first year scores for third, fourth, and fifth grade. They did not have sixth grade last year, so they wouldn't have any scores for that. The next indicator we have is the Idaho Reading Indicator. This is another assessment required by the state. And we use this in helping determine what kind of support schools need by looking at the number of students who did not meet benchmark. That helps us figure out how many reading teachers and those kinds of supports that a school needs. And so, if a child scored a one or two, they are not considered to have met benchmarks, so that factored into that. The school also gives some screening assessments, which are required in the state of Idaho, but you're allowed to pick what screening assessments you want to use, and they use the Slosson, and that's in the report, if you want to see that more in detail. When we were looking at their written curriculum, because of course we didn't watch instruction for the entire school year there, so we don't, you know, there's a difference between the taught curriculum and then the written curriculum in every classroom in the world. But so when we were looking at their written curriculum, English Language Arts, we saw a lot of the Idaho content standards in there. Couldn't find a few of them, so those would need to be added to their written curriculum. Same thing for mathematics. Science, the curriculum currently cites the 1996 standards, so those would need to be updated to the current Idaho science standards. And social studies, we couldn't find the Idaho content standards. What we found is from Wisconsin and includes the domains of geography and history. In Idaho, there are five domains, which must be addressed, and so we would ask them to update their curriculum in that area as well. Other academic considerations is they currently have four students who qualify for English Language Services. They were assessed this spring. They don't have the scores back yet, but they had no written documentation of service plans for those students, which we would want to make sure that that happens going forward, otherwise that could be an issue of discrimination. We also saw no evidence of gate services, so we would want to make sure that there's opportunities for students to be screened and provided gifted and talented education services if need be, that, so that we don't have discrimination issues going there. They have limited instructional materials, so there would need to be some probably investment. I'm sure they would welcome some investment in instructional materials and library materials, as it was pretty sparse when we walked through the building. Their current professional development costs are total to one-half of our entire district's professional development expenditure, so that would be a conversation. The intervention times, they do have intervention times, they provide intervention. They're below the standard, especially the new standard that has been set with the new literacy bill in Idaho. And there, we had some confusion about some teacher certifications and endorsements, so that would be something we would want to verify going into an agreement. The next table shows what the allocation would be based on the same formula as we use with all of our teachers. Specials teachers for the rest of our elementary schools is like technology, music, art, PE. That's something that could be determined by the agreement, how they wanted to use those. English Language Teachers, Special Education Teachers, Gate Teachers, that's, those would not be something that would be a conversation, because those are things that keep us in the realm of non-discrimination by providing the appropriate federal services to those students. And so that pretty much is what, using the same formula we use for all of our other schools, they would be getting in general instructional staff. Then in operations, so Mr. Royal, if I mess something up, just jump in and straighten me out here. One of the things that we would like to be considered is that they have the same start and end times as we do. Otherwise, because of the fact that we're required to provide transportation to the school, we would have to add additional buses and drivers in order to be able to accommodate that. So that would be one way of not adding to the expenses is by, our current eight schools share buses and drivers and have modified start times to make that work. There is one other school in the state of Idaho that has opted out of the federal free and reduced lunch program, so that is a possibility to have a conversation about. However, we would have to figure out how we would not be discriminating against students who could not afford to pay. And would that be an additional cost to the district? Right now, the district spends 94 cents more than we get in reimbursement for every lunch, and so if we didn't get any reimbursement for those lunches, we'd have to figure that out. Some technology infrastructure needs to happen at a minimum for the reporting purposes, because some of the folks might be celebrating in your office, because you no longer would have to report to the state as much as you do now. We would have to report to the state on your behalf. So we would have to have the technology infrastructure so that we could, you could be in our system and putting your records in there, so we could easily report all the requirements into the IC component of the state. The building does not have an elevator in it right now, so it is not ADA compliant. There's some other questions about the second floor. The egress does not meet safety code. Bathrooms do not meet code, and ventilation is a problem. So those are all concerns that would have to be addressed, and the biggest concern in addressing those is this is a building that neither one of us owns. Some of the classrooms have shop doors, so we would want to talk about that. How do we improve those classrooms? Because we did notice in some of the classrooms, they had heating, portable heating units, and I assume that in the wintertime, if you have a garage door or shop door for two of your walls, or portions of two of your walls, that it's not the warmest place. Playground does not meet safety regulations. We have a certified playground inspector, and it did not meet regulations, so there would have to be some modifications there unless the board wants to assume the risk. And there was very limited emergency notification equipment. So how would we outfit the building so that if there was an emergency, it was easy to immediately notify everyone in the building of the emergency? Then when it comes to financial, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Chatterton and let him talk. Are you mic'd and ready to go? Okay.
Okay. According to the lease agreement that we reviewed with Lita West as the owner of the building, the lease payments for fiscal year 2016-17 are $99,878, and for the following year, 2017-18, lease payments are $113,876. The lease appears to be a non-compliant lease with Idaho Constitution, because it does not give the board an annual appropriation clause. Under state statute, under Idaho Constitution, one school board cannot commit a future school board to any type of a lease unless they can prove that it's a ordinary and necessary expenditure. So, I mean, that's something that would have to be determined by the court of law. The biggest thing that I see with this is if the building is not up to standards and we had to do something and move into another building or something, we're still responsible for that lease until it expires in, I believe it was the spring or the July of 2018. The other substantial part of that building that I see as inadequate is it doesn't have the same standards as our other elementary school buildings do. For example, a library, a gymnasium, an art room, technology room, a music room, PE facilities, those types of things. You know, and my concerns are, as Dr. Holmes had reiterated, is the role of doors. You know, they're, I'm sure that there's some climate control issues in every one of those classrooms, exact, in existing classrooms. There's very inadequate parking areas in, for that building. In order to be compliant with the rest of our buildings, there would have to be air conditioning added to that building, which all of our elementaries currently have. We have an estimate for air conditioning that ranges anywhere from $150,000 to $250,000. It's not included in this budget. As Dr. Holmes said, the restroom facilities upstairs are not ADA accessible. We have, there's issues in the heating systems, because the heating systems are all hydraulic. And so to add additional toilets and lavatories in that building is going to be very expensive and very time-consuming to make that happen. Fresh air ventilation is going to be a problem in the upstairs area, as there is no fresh air coming into that. We addressed the rear egress stairway is not compliant with the building codes. Okay. So what I did is I went through and projected a budget according to where the staff, the current staff would fall on our existing salary schedule, based on their years of experience and their teaching certificates, as well as the credits that we've had issued. So for example, we've projected the salaries and benefits would cost us about $1.25 million. Purchase service would be like utilities, professional development, travel, those types of things, is of $175,000. Supplies and materials of $230,000. Equipment of $783,000, and that's, a lot of that is to bring the building up to code and to make it comparable to what our existing buildings have. Insurances is going to be about $3,300. So my total projected expenditures for this would be about $2.45 million. On the revenue side, what I've projected to come in from the different areas from the state of Idaho, they give us a salary-based apportionment based on years of experience from existing staff, would be about $396,000. Entitlement is just a classroom support unit. They give us so much dollars per classroom unit, would be about $200,000. You get about $75,000 in fringe benefit support, and other state support is about $76,000. So the total amount of money we would receive from the state of Idaho as revenue to offset the expenses is about $745,000. So that shows a difference of about 1.7 million dollars between what we would receive in state funds and what we would pay out in expenses. Now, a big portion of that cost is money that would, it would require to bring the building up, but it would still be about a little over a million dollars a year that we would have to pay on an ongoing basis after the first year, too. Okay? Let me just look. Another thing I want to address is their fund balance. At the end of June of 2015, they had a negative fund balance of a little, about $35,000. They've received approximately 90% of their guaranteed revenues from the state of Idaho. They have about $76,000 left to collect from the state. So unless Seringa has cut programming staff time back substantially or cost measures, I'm projecting that they're going to have to raise somewhere about $200,000 between now and the end of school year to break even. Which would be another burden on the district to incorporate that as well.
Okay. Appreciate for that. I'll go ahead and open it up to the board for questions, discussions. And I believe actually we have Meni Koblats, Spe Grober, and Mary Jervosi to go ahead and answer any questions from Seringa Mountain School here with us again. Go ahead and open it up for discussions, questions at this time. Trustee Corcor.
So, I'm a numbers person, and I looked at the numbers, and I got quite a bit different numbers, and I'll just tell you how I did it. The first thing is, I looked at the per pupil amount of local revenue minus the plant and facilities levy, and that was about $32 million. 38 with the plant and facilities, 32 without. I added up the total amount of students between, if Seringa would join the district, it came out to 3,501 students. I then divided 3,501 total students into the amount of local revenue. I got about $9,195. I wish I could show this on the board, but I can't. So, $9,195 is what, it would cost the district out of local funds to support the Seringa kids coming into BCSD. If you take $9,195 and times it by 125 Seringa students, you get $1,149,375. Wait, wait. Then I added up the extra revenue that would come in, and I got actually a number very close to Mike's number. I got $735,625. So when I took the difference between those two, the amount of extra that it would cost for those students and from local revenue, having to be divided, subdivided even more than it is now, and I took out the revenues that would be coming in, I got a net of $413,750 per year that it would cost the district extra. And that was my number. So I'm, I need, you know, we need to talk about the numbers. And I don't think it's, you know, I think that that number is way off, so we need to, we need to figure out, if we're drilling down into expenses, I think that the number that you came up with, Mike, possibly shows, but if you actually do it on a per pupil basis, I think it's a lot lower.
Well, I'm kind of wondering about if this is an innovative school. Are all these things required? I know that we're talking about discrimination and whatnot, but like, things like a playground. I think that they formed their playground the way that they did, because that's how they wanted to have it, not that they wanted to have swing sets and other things that normal schools have, but this is a different model. This is not the ordinary model, and because it's an innovation school, I don't think we're looking at the same set of requirements. That's kind of my point of view.
Dr. Holmes.
I'll defer to Mr. Royal.
So there are criteria that have to be met for the playground. So, one of the items was the net. They have a kind of a cargo-looking net, and there are angles on the cargo net that are less than a certain angle, so it presents a choke hazard. There are also impact zones that have to be met, so if a child falls off the swings, it's twice the height of the height of the swing set, front and back, and those aren't met. There's a little bridge that's taller than the fall range for that, so we would have to have railings put on to the bridge. So there is criteria.
Okay. But I mean, it sounds like those are pretty minimal, like just making some adjustments within the current playground area, not adding more equipment, like I've seen here, you know, adding equipment.
You also have, you also have impact materials, the sodas that they put down. Has to be a certain depth for that, so the current playground doesn't meet that depth, so you have to excavate out the existing material, put in that amount of the material.
What's wrong with the current material?
It's not, it's not deep enough to provide the impact that you need. It has to be a certain depth per.
And we couldn't add on top of that?
You could, but you still, now you're raising it up above.
Ground level.
It's a nine-inch depth, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, there's a, it's a, you know, it's a significant playground.
Dr. Holmes.
We're not proposing that they have to change their playground to meet like all of our other playgrounds. We're proposing that their playground needs to meet safety codes, because if something happens, you as the board are liable for what happens.
Right. I understand that, but I'm just kind of wondering about, when we're talking about all these costs in here, it sounds like we're looking down at the nitty-gritty of all these things, saying, well, just because they don't have these things. They're a different kind of school, is my point. I don't know why we're having to say we have to bring them up and have them looking like our other elementaries that we currently have.
Mr. King, would you please use the mic?
Thank you. I'm sorry. It's the legislature that says they have to meet safety standards, and what Mr. Royal was reciting are state and federal statutes. If you, if somebody is injured and there's a violation of a statute, the person that violates the statute is presumed to be negligent.
Right. I get that about the playground. I'm an insurance agent, so I do understand about liability. But my question is, is that we're trying to find all these little things, you know, such as library, them not having enough books. It sounds like, they have a different thing, and we can look at this school as a different kind of school structure, and we don't need to have all these small little things, because they're operating differently. They have a different thing, and part of the law that was just passed, to my understanding, is that we, allows them to work within the school district on a different level without needing all these additional things that all the rest of our schools have. Like, they have like toys that are not made of plastic and can't be, you know. You're not looking at chemical houses, yes?
Dr. Holmes.
Sean. Once again, we're not saying they have to have the same books we have. We're not saying, but we are saying, according to this code, we are to distribute resources to them the same way we would distribute to all the other schools. So we ran them through the same formulas we run all of our schools through. So if they wanted to buy a different set of books, or a different whatever, that's their, that would be part of the agreement that we would enter into, but we're required under this law to provide for them equally as we provide for the rest of our schools. And so we don't want them to come back two years later and say, you weren't providing equally for us, so we have to provide equally for them.
So we could potentially send less, nonetheless projected?
No. It's very clear about federal, state, and local funds being used, distributed equally.
Okay.
Under, if I may, Sean? Sorry. Mr. King.
The statute says that the provision, the district must distribute local funding consistent with the amounts it distributes to other schools in the district, so that the charter school would be able to demand essentially the same funding consistent with the other schools. So.
Okay. But say they didn't want to use all of that, what, where are we at then?
Well, it says we are to distribute it. Certainly if a school rejected funding, I would think a school would have the option. It's a pretty rare animal that rejects funding in this world, so.
Quick question. Mike, you mentioned for the equipment, if I'm remembering correctly, some 800,000 costs for equipment upgrades. Is that a one-time cost or a recurring cost? Or what would the recurring cost be?
The majority of it is one-time costs, like probably 750,000 of that 800,000 is to bring the building up to code, and one-time technology needs, you know, equipment that we would have to buy for the building itself. I mean, the big portion of that would be elevator in the buildings and bathrooms, enlarging bathroom, restroom areas, egress areas for the fire safety, those types of things would be major.
Am I correct in my understanding, too, that you mentioned that this is not technically a legal contract that a school district can sign into as far as the lease agreement, and that lease agreement is due in July of 2018 anyway? What happens to those upgrades if they were to happen come July 2018?
They all belong to the owner of the building itself.
Okay. Trustee Corcor.
So, that was a really good point, I think, about equal funding. It should be absolutely equal between.
Well, not equal.
Equivalent.
No. It just says, sorry, it says consistent with the amounts it distributes to other schools. So whatever the formula, it would be a like formula. I'm not the finance person, I defer to Mr. Chatterton, but it would be a like formula, but I would not use the word equal or identical.
Consistent, right.
Consistent is what the legislature says.
Right. So, you know, I think, I think, Mike, your numbers, if you look at it on a per pupil basis, you get significantly more per pupil going to Seringa. And while I'm sure that they would appreciate that, I think that it's not in line with the rest of the district. So those need to be dialed back to the point where it is consistent. And if it's consistent, then you get a lower outflow of money per year to that school. If it's consistent, you get a figure of $413,750 each year to make that school go in terms of the net between what's coming in from the state and the feds, and what is the pie locally has to be divided up a little bit less. My other question is, the, all of this. My other question is, the, all of this stuff that we're talking about now with the playgrounds and things like that, aren't those the same kind of upgrades that we're talking about in the plant and facilities levy doing now with, with Howie? And if so, why couldn't the plant and facilities levy be used for that? That's exactly the kind of thing you'd want the plant and facilities levy to be used for.
Mr. Chatterton?
The plant and facilities levy does not pay for playground equipment. We haven't done that. It does do minor building repairs, those types of things. My whole point is, is should we spend taxpayer money, regardless if it's plant facility or general fund money, on a building that we don't own and that we will lose in two years? And to address the fact of salaries and benefits, I ran the same numbers of Sarinca as I did for every other school in this, in the district. If you looked at individual schools without our district, I'm sure you're going to find inequality with all of them.
Right.
Because teachers are on different salary schedule, on columns and steps than other schools are. So there's going to be variances all the way through.
Yeah, not, not, not this much. That's, that's the issue. It's not, this is an order of magnitude. So that's why I'm just saying that we just need to look at all of the kids together, not, I think, the piecemeal fashion to say you need this many teachers and this. That's one way to do it, but it yielded a number that would have Sarinca kids be per pupil, their per pupil funding would be two or three times more than the average kid. And that's why I don't agree with it.
Dr. Holmes?
We use the exact same formulas that are in your current draft budget for all of the rest of our schools. It was really important to us that we treat them equally. That's what the statute says. So if our numbers for Sarinca are wrong, then our numbers for every school in the district are wrong.
I hope not.
I hope not too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chatterton?
I would be willing to bet if you looked at Cary Elementary, it would be the same, same scenario compared to Haley Elementary as Sarinca would be against Haley Elementary.
It could be a lot more because it's a small school. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. But I.
The staffing is very comparable between Sarinca and Cary Elementary School.
You got it.
And actually, we have less staff in our budget than Sarinca currently has.
How much did you, was your total amount that you, could you reiterate that? Your total yearly amount?
For salaries?
Uh, for everything, for cost. To keep the, to keep the, for general fund yearly.
It was about $2,445,000.
No, for the, for, after the safety things are taken care of.
Right.
Just the ongoing.
Yes, ongoing, exactly.
It would be about 1.7 million.
Yes, okay. So, yeah, I just, we just need to look at that and, and make it more, more consistent, I think is probably the word there.
Do we have a comparable with Cary's elementary budget proposed? I don't have that right off the top of my head.
I do not. But I think if you look at the analysis that we did and go through those positions in the report that we generated, you're going to see that that's very consistent with all of the other schools. What's going to throw that off a little bit is, is special education, because we do have a rule that within the district that regardless of the number of special ed kids in each one of the buildings, they are assigned a full-time special ed teacher and a full-time special ed parent.
As a minimum.
As a minimum.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I just think that the order of magnitude is four times per pupil, four times larger, over four times larger. So there's got to be some, something that's a little bit, I, you know, I know that Cary's a smaller school, but I, if they have four times the average per pupil funding, that's not a consistent method of funding.
Can you explain where you get four times the difference? Because when, when I do the math, taking out the, the cost of equipment, I get a 1.7.
Sure.
And you, Kay, said you come up with 1.14.
Sure.
So how is that four times?
This, if you want to see, so these are the numbers. This is not talking about equipment. This is not talking about, it's talking about yearly expense.
Agreed. And that's why I took the, took the equipment out of it and left it at 1.7 instead of the 2.5 with the equipment upgrades.
Sure. So all I did is I took the local funding, total local funding that our schools get, I divided it by the total amount of students, including the Sarinca students. I got, you can see, $9,195 that we would have to pay per student for Sarinca to come into the district. So that's a, that's, that's an outflow for Blaine County School District. 125 students. I got $1,149,375 from that. So that's our next net cost. Then I figured out how much we get per pupil for every student in Blaine County School District on average from the state and the feds. And from the state, it was $5,343. From the feds, it was, I can't see, it was 400 and something dollars. I remember that. I didn't, I don't have it on here.
542.
542. It's got to be on there. Oh, yeah, 542. So I then times those two amounts by 125 kids to find out how much money would be coming in. So the outflow was $1,149,375. The inflow from the feds and from the state, based on what we are getting from the feds and the state for average kids in Blaine County right now, was $735,625, which came very close to Mike's numbers.
And not including the plant and facilities levy?
Right, not, not including the plant and facilities levy, which I say up here. Exactly. So the net per year I get is $413,750. And I get that there's economies of scale, but it's in that range. It might be up to 500, I don't know. But it's in that range if we're going to be consistent.
Trustee Freund, or Mr. Chatterton?
I think, actually, I know, Liz, the economies of scale is going to be a big factor here, as well as if, when you start comparing what we receive versus what Sarinca receives in federal dollars, that's not a comparison because they have very, very few students that are eligible for federal dollars. So they have very, very little federal dollars that come into the school right now. So I mean, trying to come up with an average per student, you can't equate it that way because you would have to look, for example, they only have four LEP students in that. I mean, they're not going to get the same dollars per student as we would at Blaine County.
Sure.
On that allocation.
Sure.
As is in special services either. I mean, it's not, to do that a fair comparison, you would have to consider the economies of scale, and you would also have to consider the amount of money that's generated from the general fund only, because everything else is based on a number of students.
Even if you took away all of the federal money, it would still come out to something in the order of 500,000, not even.
And Dr. Holmes?
Mr. Chatterton, when you built that, you built it based on what they gave us for their current staff and their years of experience and levels of certification education, just like we would do for any of our schools. So the, part of the problem we're trying to talk about here by dividing money equally among kids means that, just to give a really rough example, Hemingway and Altoris would get the same amount of money. But Hemingway has a very senior, well-experienced staff who is much higher up on the pay scale than a lot of the younger staff at Altoris. So that's why we do it based on position rather than based on dollar. So that helps, because if we did it based on dollar, Hemingway would not be able to pay part of their teachers, and Altoris would all get a raise or something, I don't know.
This took into account an average, which I think is about 70,000 per teacher.
Further questions or comments prior to opening it up to public comment?
I wanted to know. I want to know if the lease that the school has, Sarinca Mountain School has between Lido West and them is, has any flexibility?
If you would, please.
Do you want to state your name as you do that, please?
Hi, my name is Randy Flood. Thank you for, we're very grateful that we're having this discussion here today. Sarinca Mountain School controls its destiny for the next 10 years. We have two four-year options, starting and commencing in 2018. So if we were to amortize over some of the expenses that could go into the facility if we did not purchase the building, for example, if we took Mike's number for the 435,000, amortize that over on a monthly basis, that's going to cost 20, 20 cents per square foot in addition. So right now, our lease is 47 cents per square foot. So putting that at a market rate of 67 cents with the 435,000 of improvements, amortized over 10 years, if we didn't buy the building, is going to be way better than we could do with any other building that you guys build at a 67 cent per square foot basis. So we have our, we control our destiny, and we do have the flexibility of potentially purchasing the property from the owner. So that's something that we're kind of going down the avenue of discussing at the moment right now.
Thank you. I'm Julie Evans. Thank you so much for being here and allowing us this time. And Adam, you might correct me on this if you think I'm wrong here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, eat, eat that microphone.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to add that a number of the improvements, as I've read them, and equipment and technology, we should clarify that the lease does allow for trade fixtures and equipment and other personal property and business property to be removed, provided, at the end of the lease, provided that they are not permanently affixed to the building itself and made a part of the structure. So we could affix things in a fashion that as long as we repair a little damage when we go, we're good to take all those things with us. I do understand that there may be future compliance issues, and I'm sensitive to when we use the phrase non-compliance, that we are talking about non-compliant as we move forward if the student body were to grow. It's my understanding that the egress and the elevators, et cetera, would need to be improved. I'm also concerned about whether, and, you know, I'm sure Mike and Howie know what they're doing, so they could clarify this. Are we talking about improvements that need to be made to meet minimum standards? Or are we talking about improvements that are needing to be made to, to meet maximum and ideal standards?
Mr. Royal, would you please address those questions?
And, and if I may, just quickly, I also want to remind us all that in the state of Idaho, correct me here, Adam, if I'm wrong, but we, a tenant does have the statutory right to sublet with reasonable approval of the landlord not to be withheld. The purchase of the building, and we are looking into creating an appropriation clause, thank you for letting us know about that. It does appear that the landlord is willing to discuss that. And also, all indications are that she would like to sell the building. We are looking into some purchase mortgage financing right now that would actually reduce our monthly costs by approximately, help me, Randy, $2,000 a month. So that could be considerable.
Mr. Royal?
Thank you so much.
My understanding is that the, the.
My understanding for the, the minimum, the minimum criteria for the building would be an elevator to be able to utilize the upstairs in any fashion other than storage for the, the back portion of the building. There's also a back stairway, a back egress, but according to what I was told, that stairway doesn't meet compliance with regard to width and tread depth and height, so there'd have to be a new stairway built. And there's a design in place that they would put that stairway on the outside of the building on the, on the south, south wall. There's also a consideration with regard to conditional use. My understanding is when the, when they went forward previous, that there was, that they met the criteria of conditional use for the city of Haley. But since then, the city of Haley has changed the criteria for conditional use permit in that area, and it would be likely that they would have to go back to planning and zoning and generate a findings effect for the building for the future use of the upstairs as, as they plan to go forward with that.
Is the upstairs currently be, being utilized for items other than storage?
Yes.
Okay. And that information you got was from a report from the Department of Building and Safety?
The, the information I got was from, there was a, a letter from Dr. Javasi that was sent to the Department of Building Safety requesting a, a consideration for utilizing the building as it was, and there was an email that sent back, and that was a year ago, I think in February, March, that they, they could have that two years to, to make the improvements that they needed to, to have for upstairs. But after that point, the, the building will have to be brought up to, to be ADA compliant for upstairs, is my understanding.
So per your understanding, they have a year to bring that building up to compliance anyway?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Further questions, comments? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment at this time, and we'll turn the time over to Mendy Koblats, representing herself.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you would, please.
My name is actually Mendy Koblenz.
I apologize. I apologize.
That is perfectly fine. Can, am I heard adequately through this, or do I need to really?
Yeah, all the way through.
Okay. All right. Well, I wanted to begin just by expressing on behalf of Sarinca Mountain School our appreciation and gratitude for the time, energy, resources, and consideration that's gone into our request to become one of the 10 innovation schools through this new law. As educators, we're really excited about collaboration, and, you know, it's exciting to begin dialogues with colleagues down the road whom we esteem and admire, and we're grateful to be part of this educational community. We're here today, this whole community behind me, to really say that we're just interested in applying to be considered an innovation school, and we're looking forward to further collaboration. I think any time that an individual or an organization undergoes a review process, there's great gifts within it. So this has been a really exciting process for us to have you come and visit our school and to go through the due diligence. There's places where we are able to learn and grow, and there's also places where we feel we're doing really well. Within any evaluation process though, there's always a moment when the time for conversation clarification comes, and there are some things in the document that we would like to respond to because some of the information needs to be clarified. I'm not sure that this is the time and the place for it, but we will be responding to some of the concerns or some of the, the data that was presented here because some of the facts are a little bit awry. And what I just want to say is that I think as educators, we all know that a document cannot possibly fully and adequately describe a school organization. It's too complex. There's many more things that we bring to the table. So we're talking about cost, but I haven't really heard a lot of conversation about the value that we would bring to the community as an innovation school and as a different method school. So one of the things I think that we would absolutely bring to the Wood River Valley in a way that's truly unique is we have a curriculum that has been in place for nearly 100 years that is doing the very things that are such fads right now within the field of education. We've got project-based learning. We have sensory integration programs. We have, we teach multiple intelligences. We've had environmental studies for years. We're very much eco-minded, which speaks to where our playground looks, the fact that we have a garden there, for example. We, we use an integrated arts and movements curriculum. So you might not see a gymnasium because the kids are moving constantly within each subject area within each class. You might not see an art room, for example, because the kids are into, having art in all of their lessons. And I think that's something that's truly unique about our curriculum that we're just so excited to bring forward. And I would just like to encourage us to consider the possibility of further collaboration from our board to yours. And thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Marie Wolfram, representing the Blaine County Education Association.
Thank you. This latest legislative session, we, as educators generally, celebrated the infusion of money into public education by the legislature. For a state that receives a grade of F by the, according to the Education Week Resource Center for school funding, this seems like something that we should absolutely celebrate. But this funding will really only bring Idaho up to 2009 levels. convinced our legislators to think that way, too. These private interests have managed to get passed and signed by our governor two pieces of legislation that are concerning, that have potentially dramatic impacts on our public schools. They did this with a heavy dose of lobbying money from state and national private interests, including the American Legislative Exchange Council, known as ALEC. And now, this attack on our public schools has become localized in this request for the district to enter into an innovative school agreement with the Sarinca Mountain School. The first piece of legislation, which we've talked about, HB 570, has become part of Title 33 of the Education Statutes, Chapter 58, known as the Local Innovation School Act, and allows us to bypass certain laws and rules for becoming public schools. The other troubling piece of legislation is one that would essentially allow these charter schools to issue contracts of their own choice rather than those required by the state. Why is this important to Blaine County? Currently, all eyes interested in education in the state are on Blaine County, as the Sarinca Mountain School, to my knowledge, is the first school seeking designation as an innovative school in the state. The potential absorption of Sarinca by the district poses a host of questions and challenges for the district and its teachers. The inclusion of Sarinca would mean that the district will inherit and then absorb their test scores, their rented building, their lack of classroom and library resources. And some might argue that is exactly why they should be part of Blaine County School District. But at what cost to the district and the rest of our students? How might this impact district staffing when we are already experiencing a budget shortfall and we're trying to make $1.3 million of cuts in our budget? And I just heard the number 1.7, 1.4 thrown around as that was what this is going to cost us. So, I'm, I'm having some problems reconciling those two things with all of this. If we siphon money off to an innovative school, how will we pay to bus their students, fill their library and computer labs, repair and renovate their rented building, and hire teachers with the same benefits packages as BCSD teachers? All of this is mandated by the Local Innovative School Act. The second piece of legislation, and I apologize, I don't know the number of that one, is concerning for BCA as well. As the legislation states, teachers at the Sarinca School could potentially have very little due process protections under their charter school contracts. Teachers at the charter school would receive the same salaries and benefits as the district has talked about, as their peers in the Blaine County School District, but not necessarily the due process protections that are established by the Category 1, 2, and 3 contracts that are currently in existence. This could lead to vast inequities and divisiveness in our district. This is not the time for Blaine County to take on this financial burden. And so, I ask you to seriously consider, when we are trying to cut $1.3 million from our budget, and that your teachers in this district have already done a lot to help with that process, that we don't add another $1.4 or $1.7 million to our budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next up is Mr. Terry Ryan, Idaho Charter School Network, and Mark Carnegie, representing themselves.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Yes, my name is Terry Ryan, and I'm with the Idaho Charter School Network. I'm also CEO of a nonprofit called Bloom, and we were actually involved in the passage of this innovation, innovative schools language. I know that Representative Wendy Horman wanted to be here, could not be here, sends her apologies for that. I think it's important that you understand what the legislative intent behind the innovation schools language was. It was in no way about dismantling public education. It was actually about giving districts flexibilities for schools akin to what charter schools have. This is actually legislation that was supported and encouraged by the Superintendent of Napa, the Superintendent of Melba. They actually believe that through this innovation schools language, they'll be able to do more for kids, they'll be able to do more for families, they'll be able to actually do things that are different, that charters have been able to do and that they want to do, too. And one of the comments that the Superintendent of Napa made in an article in a local newspaper was, "Why should charters have all the fun?" The point here is that education is changing, needs of children are changing, you've got an innovative school here, they want to work with the district. Again, I represent the Idaho Charter School Network. They will leave the charter school space if they become an innovation school. You know what? That's great if it works for their kids and it works for their families. When it comes to the numbers, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague and CFO, Mark Carrigan.
Well, I think I should get four and a half, if I do the math right, and I am a numbers guy. Okay. Thank you for having me. My name is Mark Rignan. I am the CFO of the Idaho Charter School Network and of Bloom. I have a long history of working in finance and accounting. I was CPA for about seven years, worked in industry, worked in nonprofits. So, I've had a lot of fun in my career. What I wanted to speak to today is, a lot of numbers have been thrown around, and I wanted to give a little bit of perspective on the way that we're kind of analyzing this. The school district has, in 2014, '15, about 3,350 kids, '15, '16, 3,370, about 3,400 in '16, '17. So, an interesting thing that happened is when Sarinca Mountain School opened, 121 of your district kids moved to this school. Your funding comes in basically four key categories. The state revenues, which charters receive, and you receive. Federal revenues, charters receive, you receive. Other revenues, different types of fundraising and such. And then, your school district receives something that the charter does not, which is your local tax revenue, which for the last three years hovered around $32 million, one of the richest districts, as you know. Which means that when you take 121 kids out of your district, you get to keep those local tax revenues, 121 kids out of 3,300 kids, is approximately 3.5%, which means 3.5% or of the 32 million, for the last two fiscal years, you were blessed with the benefit of an additional $1 million of revenue that you otherwise would have spent on these kids in a different school, if they were in a different school. But for, for purpose of analyses, it's important to understand this, because we're throwing around a big number, right? If you roll this school in, discounting, not counting the facilities improvements, which are being debated, you've got about a $1.7 million budget for these kids. What that turns out to be is about $12,802 per kid. Your spending at the district is about $15,400 per pupil. So, you're actually looking at a cost savings of not as much as the charter is, is doing right now because they're working on a bare bones budget, but you're not looking at that much of an incremental cost. You're actually not, you're looking at per pupil cost, it's actually a bit lower per pupil. So, I wanted to bring these numbers into perspective because when you dive into the details, you kind of forget the big picture. But the big picture is that 121 of the 135 kids would be in your schools if not for this school being open, and that should be put into the, into consideration as you look at the numbers. And that's about it. That's my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next up is Ms. Lori Kaufman, representing Julie Dahlgren.
She was a retired teacher from Blaine County School District and also was a trustee on the board for more than eight years. I received a phone, and she could not be here tonight. I received a phone call when I first joined the Blaine County School District Board of Trustees about the Mountain School joining the district as a charter school. At that time, I knew very little about authorizing charter schools in Idaho. Before moving to Idaho, I had previously taught in a California charter school called High Sierra School, a last chance year for, a last chance year for young felons before they enter, either completed our year-long program or went to prison. I loved this teaching job and saw tremendous growth in my students. This charter school was an excellent fit for these unique students. I only preface my public comment with this personal anecdote because what follows will not support Sarinca's request to be part of Blaine County School District. My other disclosures are that I support educational choice for students. I understand the pedagogy, curriculum, and child development theories Waldorf schools and appreciate that they have been around globally since 1919. Dr. Mary Javasi is an inspirational educator in the Wood River Valley, and I have benefited from working with her as a teacher and trustee. I respect the work that she has done for Sarinca. But Sarinca is not a good fit for Blaine County School District. Number one, in the cost cutting that the board and administration is trying to accomplish, how could they, in good conscience to the taxpayers, add a $2.5 million project? This is the projected amount in the administration's due diligence report. Number two, the privatization of public schools is a trend in public schooling. Idaho's recent Local Innovation School Act would allow Sarinca, if they reach an agreement with BCSD, to share in district funding without giving up autonomy over its operations and curriculum. Negotiated teacher, staff, and administrative contracts, vetted curriculums, demographic fairness, and equity for all students would be cast to the wind. Sarinca would be a private school and not have to adhere to district standards and policies. Number three, Idaho House Bill 570 Local Innovative School Act was written by ALEC. The ALEC website names it the Innovation Schools and School District Act. ALEC, the American Legislative Exchange Council, is funded by the Koch Brothers. They are in the business of training state legislators in their various missions, one of which is passing charter school laws. We know Idaho is a conservative state with many legislators, legislators receiving training and ideas from ALEC. This new law is straight out of the ALEC playbook. Number four, Chairman Greg Bloomfield in the April 8, 2016... I'm going to go probably for one more minute. Is that okay?
We allowed a little discrepancy of time for some of the other comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll try to read faster. It's not too much more. Number four, Mr. Bloomfield, in the April 8, 2016, Chris Stetter article, "Sarinca Seeks Innovative School Status," stated, "We'd be greatly improving their offerings." They have Silver Creek High School, but they don't have any alternative schools for elementary or middle schools. Waldorf-inspired curriculum is fine for some students whose parents want less technology within an anthroposophy curriculum. An alternative school for elementary and middle school students needs to be, needs deep research into the need and efficacy of such a school. And five, lastly, I know charters operate on lean budgets. They do not yet have the ability in Idaho to bond for facilities. Often after first-generation passionate parents leave when their students go on to different schools, the second and third generation parents lose enthusiasm. Funding becomes difficult, schools fail. I'm hoping last weekend's Hoedown fundraiser and auction brought in lots of revenue for Sarinca. Thank you, Julie Dahlgren.
Thank you for the comment. All right. That is all the public comments that we have received. We'll go ahead and turn it back to the board for further discussion and questions.
Just have some observations. So, if the Sarinca kids go back to the public school, the conventional public schools, the, the classroom sizes grow. And so, I don't, I, I guess I'm not understanding where, it seems like there's, that's not going to happen. I don't know a teacher who wants a larger classroom size, so I'm really not, I'm confused about that. I wanted to clarify also a little bit about the numbers that were brought up. The difference between the numbers that Mike came up with and the numbers that I came up with is Mike came up with 1.7 million per year funding. I came up with around 400,000 per year funding. I realize my, the numbers that I came up with are an average across the district of how much an average, if Sarinca was an, each kid was an average kid in an average school, in an average size Blaine County School District school. So, I understand the economies of scale, this is a smaller school, so it would probably be, I don't know, a bit larger than my numbers. But that's a significant difference. So, I want, I want especially teachers to understand what we're talking about here. We're talking about a significant difference in how much we're, each year it would be out of the budget. We're also talking about classroom sizes that would remain small, smaller in Blaine County School District. So, those two things need to be taken into account.
Can I ask a clarifying question, trustee Corker? You keep mentioning 400 and Mike's 1.7, but your 400 subtracts a 750-ish in revenues, but in 1.7, you do not subtract that 750 in revenues. So, I, I don't see that as an equitable comparison?
No, no, he, as far as I'm, I think you, you gave us a net number, right? Your net number?
Mr. Chatterton.
The net number that I gave you of 1.7 million included about $700,000 in building costs, but the net number I gave you in annual cost was a million dollars.
Okay.
The second, second point I want to make is, we compare this with Cary Elementary School, they're very similar in size and staffing. So, your question about how I came up with budget numbers comparatively? I'm projecting $1,254,660 for Sarinca. Our current staff next year at Cary Elementary is budgeted at $1,417,434.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's very close as a comparison in both students and staffing as Cary Elementary School, and as well as my projected salaries and benefit packages for their staff versus Cary are very similar.
Sure. And, and maybe that brings up also a fact that we should look across the district at consistency. I understand, like I said, economies of scale, but when you get one school that's got over two times more funding than another school, maybe that's something that does require some examination as well.
Dr. Holmes.
Remember, the difference in funding is primarily dependent upon staff within the building. So, how many years of experience, how much education does the staff have? That's the primary difference. And that's a problem that school districts, especially large urban districts, struggle with all the time because of the fact that they will have schools that have very young staff compared to schools that have very experienced staff. That's why we do our allocation based on FTE rather than based on dollars. Either that or we would be encouraging schools to not go for experience, but to go for the younger, cheaper teacher. And we want them to go for the best, regardless whether they're young, experienced, where they are, we want the best.
Trustee Corker.
So, there's another thing that concerns me a little bit about the whole, this entire issue of who's in Blaine County School District and who's out of Blaine County School District. It's our job as trustees to represent all of the kids of Blaine County, not just this section or that section, you know, not just the kids who opt in. When you see, as I've observed over the past, well, this is a six, this is six years of a chart, these, this is the increase in enrollment of non-BCSD schools. Meanwhile, it's gone from in 2010, from 392 to this year, 15, 16, 674. When I see that, that's a red flag for me, that we need to perhaps be looking at what are we doing and how can we get a model that works for more kids instead of having kids who are opting out? And selfishly, there's another reason for this, and actually, teachers should be very concerned about this, and that is that when we do go to pass levies, you will have a smaller and smaller portion of this community who will have ownership of the public schools, and there will be less and less people who will vote for a levy. So, that concerns me greatly. It will, in the long run, could adversely affect Blaine County School District if we can continue to not answer the needs of an increasingly larger number of kids. So, there's a selfish reason as well. There's one other thing that's going on with our, with our, with our community that we should all understand, it's aging, and it's aging very rapidly. We've gone from an average age of 37 to over, to about 41 now. That's also an ownership gap. People are not going to be as invested in our public schools. So, we have to do everything we can to widen the net... we can to widen the net and, and draw more people into the family, not look for reasons to exclude, because longer term, that will hurt us.
All right, further questions, comments? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 5:12.